Five minutes after seven o'clock, a time for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Beloit City Council, 100 State Street, Beloit, Wisconsin. We have a call to order, so how about the roll call?
Roll call shows all councilors present except for Kevin D. Levy.
Number two is Pledge Allegiance, and would you please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number three, Special Orders of the Day and Announcements, we have two, item 3A.
A proclamation honoring J. Norwood Ding Darling and declaring October 21st, 2013, as J.N. Ding Darling Day.
I believe there's Mr. Samuel Klatinsky to accept the proclamations. Please come forward. Mr. Vice President.
Whereas J. Norwood Ding Darling graduated from Beloit College in 1900, and whereas Darling's political cartoons were published in over 130 newspapers nationwide during the first half of the 20th century before television, when newspapers were the primary means of mass communication, receiving two Pulitzer Prizes for editorial cartooning in 1924 and 1943, and whereas Darling's observant eye and grasp of history led him to become a pioneering conservationist who firmly believed that the wise use of our nation's natural resources was utterly necessary to the continued prosperity and strength of this country, and whereas President Franklin D. Roosevelt appointed Darling as the head of the U.S. Biological Survey, a precursor to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, where Darling implemented the federal duck stamp program, drew the first federal duck stamp, and developed the rationale for the architecture of the National Wildlife Refuge System itself, and whereas Darling conceived the Cooperative Fish and Wildlife Research Unit Program at Iowa State University, a program that has spread to nearly 50 universities across the nation and personally funded one-third of the program's first three years of operation, and Darling later was a founder of the National Wildlife Federation, serving as its first president, and whereas Darling passed away in 1962, and his memory lives on through his many lasting contributions, now therefore, the city council president of the city of Beloit does hereby proclaim October 21st, 2013, as J.N. Ding Darling Day, in honor and recognition of his professional achievements and significant influence on the environment, presented this seventh day of October, 2013.
Thank you very much.
You don't know how happy this makes me, and the grandson, Kip Cos, is delighted that I am able to be here in Beloit to accept this proclamation. Darling had such an extensive and wonderful education here at Beloit College, and I've spent quite a bit of time here as I've worked on a television documentary. And I wanted to share with you, last night, we received the 2013 Conservation Education Award for the project in Milwaukee through the Wildlife Society. There are a number of people that have worked on this proclamation, and I thank you, and I will be driving back to Florida and sharing this immediately with the grandson. Thank you very much for all of your time and energy, and I personally appreciate what you do for your wonderful city and your film festival and all the wonderful people that make up your community. Thank you very much.
A proclamation declaring October 6th through 12th, 2013, as National Fire Prevention Week with the theme "Prevent Kitchen Fires."
Whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires killed more than 2,500 people in the United States in 2011, according to the National Fire Protection Association, NFPA, and fire departments in the United States responded to 370,000 home fires, and whereas cooking is the leading clause of home fires in the United States, and two of every five home fires start in the kitchen, and whereas unattended equipment was a factor in one-third of the reported cooking fires, so residents should stay in the kitchen when frying food on the stove top, keep a three-foot kid-free zone around cooking areas, and keep anything that can catch fire away from stove tops, and whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and a working smoke alarm cuts the risk of dying in a home fire in half, and whereas our first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and the 2013 Fire Prevention Week theme "Prevent Kitchen Fires" effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Now therefore, the city council president of the city of Beloit does hereby proclaim October 6th through 12th, 2013, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city, urges all the people of the city of Beloit to check their kitchens for fire hazards and using safe cooking practices, and supports the many public safety activities and efforts of fire and emergency services, presented this seventh day of October, 2013.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for this proclamation. Good evening, councilors, city manager, my fellow citizens. This is National Fire Prevention Week, and our firefighters are out in force in our school system, teaching fire safety to our kids, presenting fire safety to our resident population, and also working with local industry in promoting fire safety in the workplace. Our fire inspectors are out every day ensuring your safety in public places, and it's our goal to improve the life safety of the residents and visitors that come to Beloit, making this a great place to live, work, and play. I just want to remind you all once again, check your smoke detectors, change your batteries twice a year, practice your exit drills, know two ways out of every room in your home, have a meeting place for everyone to meet should you have a fire, and then also practice burn prevention, and many tips are available. I have a bunch of leaflets for everyone this evening up in the back of the room, principally the one, this one focuses on cooking safety. Always be alert, stay in your kitchen, make sure that you are keeping those pot handles turned in so kids can't reach up and grab them, keep that cook-free, or the kid-free zone around the area where you're cooking. If you do have a cooking fire, get everybody out, call 911, and make sure that you get help on the way right away. If you're trying to put the fire out, use a fire extinguisher. You can put a lid on top of the pan and turn the heat off, that will make the fire go out, but it's very, very important to always call the fire department. We will respond, make sure the fire is out, make sure you're safe, make sure your home is safe for you to return to. Thank you very much for this proclamation, and please help us in celebrating Fire Prevention Week this week. On October 10th, Thursday evening, from 4:00 to 8:00, we will be at Pizza Hut for our annual Survival Live House benefit. The firefighters will be serving pizza, there'll be apparatus displays, a fire pole for the kids to slide down, and a great deal of fire prevention information for families to collect and take home to practice their exit drills and fire safety at home. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number four is Public Hearings, item 4A.
A proposed ordinance amending the city of Beloit comprehensive plan to change the future land use designation for the properties located at 2091 and 2105 Chopier Road from single-family residential urban to neighborhood commercial. The Plan Commission recommended approval 5 to 0 of 2091 Chopier Road only.
Madam Director.
2091 Chopier Road is a commercial structure, 2105 Chopier Road is a residential structure. The applicant applied for both because we had said that we felt it could be spot zoning with just one property, which is why they both came forward. Both applicants came forward. The commercial building currently has a bakery, a hair salon, and a transportation service. They've come forward before you several times for conditional uses to change from one nonconforming property, not one nonconforming use to another nonconforming use. At the meeting, residents, a resident came forward with a petition, which is included, I think, in your packet for the zoning piece, requesting, or basically opposing the rezoning of the house itself, but supporting the rezoning. They did say they supported the rezoning of the 2091 Chopier Road, the commercial structure. They said that's always been a positive business in their neighborhood. The comprehensive plan currently shows us a single-family residential, it's also a zone single-family residential, so there's two steps in order to get the property rezoned. The first is this comprehensive plan amendment, which would change the comprehensive plan itself. The second step is actually the rezoning to C2, which would then allow neighborhood commercial uses in the future, which is what is there at this time. Besides the opposition from the neighborhood to the single-family being changed to commercial, there was no other opposition to these requests. So there's two pieces to this. First is comprehensive plan amendment, and then is the rezoning. And Plan Commission did recommend approval 5 to 0 to make the change just to the 2091 Chopier Road property.
Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing on item 4A. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on item 4A, please approach the podium and state your name and address.
My name is Dave Brown. I'm 2905 Dartmouth Drive in Janesville. I am the owner of the building at 2091 Chopier Road, and I'm the one making the request. I'm fine with just leaving it on the 2091 property only. That's really my own, only, that's the one that I own, and that's the one that I want. I'm just trying to get it so that if there's, if I have another tenant that I can put in there, I'd like to have a little more flexibility in who I can put in there rather than having to come in front of the commission each time to do the conditional use permit each time.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other persons wishing to come forward and speak on item 4A? Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4A. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4A. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on item 4A. Do we have any motion on this one, or we would like to have a discussion? What is your pleasure? I think, Councilor Vanna Bogart.
I'd move approval of the application for the 2091, leaving off the other.
I think we have to have a motion to suspend the rules first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Move to suspend the rules.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Councilor Kincaid.
We do have a second.
Okay.
Right. And I would like to, I think, I support this motion to follow the recommendations of the Planning Commission and the residents in the area.
Okay.
Mr. President, could we just make that as a motion to amend? The underlying ordinance is on the table now.
Sure.
If that motion were to amend, to apply to 2091 only, remove 2105.
Suppose we could do this in any order.
Then you can amend and then act on the final ordinance.
Okay, because we have to get, we want to do the amendment first, we can do that, and then we can move to suspend the rules. I mean, we have some flexibility here. Does that amendment that you wanted to make?
Mr. Casper, does it make any difference when we amend? You have to amend somewhere.
I think it's within the chair's discretion.
Sure, and that's how I feel about it. So I'm okay with going ahead and amending it first, if you wish to do that. Is that a motion to amend?
Yes, I make that motion to amend, to memorialize the zoning on the existing commercial property.
All right.
That's sufficient.
The amended by Kincaid and seconded by Lubkey. Do we have any discussion on that amendment? Councilor DeForest.
I guess I just want to make sure I don't miss the opportunity, because I don't know if we're still moving to suspend the rules. I am concerned about this being spot zoning. In order for it to not be spot zoning, it has to serve some kind of public purpose or public benefit, and while I appreciate Mr. Brown's investment in this property, I do not see any public benefit to rezoning this particular property. It is one single property in a residential neighborhood. There's a reason why we have a comp plan. It's to avoid this type of spot zoning, and so I would encourage my colleagues to deny this request. That's my comment, thank you.
Councilor Spritzer.
I guess my thought on the issue of the spot zoning is, I mean, I guess we have three options we could rezone, nothing, we could rezone both, or we could rezone the one. It seems like there is a public benefit in not rezoning both for the sake of avoiding spot zoning, given that the public doesn't want the other one rezoned, so, and since there doesn't seem to be any reason other than the spot zoning not to rezone the one that's been requested, I guess I'm in favor of moving forward with doing the one but not the other, because that seems to be what the neighborhood feels comfortable with, and it seems like the spot zoning definition is subjective enough that we're not necessarily in trouble with it.
Councilor Vanna Bogart.
If this were a new building, or if this were a new project, I think the argument against the spot zoning would be stronger, but this simply reflects the reality that's been there for 50 years perhaps. So I, while it may appear at first blush to be an exception to the neighborhood or to the consistency issue, it's not. It's simply reflecting on paper what's existed in fact for 50 years.
Councilor DeForest.
I'm concerned that this could go down a slippery slope, that if we rezone this particular property, it could set a precedent for other properties nearby. The neighbors have clearly spoken, they do not want any other commercial development in their neighborhood, pretty clearly here. When the initial proposal came forward, it was an effort to avoid spot zoning. Because this is spot zoning, let's please call it what it is. This is, I feel very strongly this is against the intent of comp planning. We shouldn't even have comp planning if we're going to continue to make these spot zoning decisions. This does not affect his current ability to run his businesses or to rent this space. He's looking at ways, he clearly said, to benefit, to provide greater variety in future renters that he might have come to this property. The neighbors have spoken very loud and clearly, do not want further commercial development, and I want to preserve the integrity of this neighborhood. It's a residential area, and so again, I just want to make sure that I make it very clear for the record that, in my opinion, this is spot zoning. Thank you.
Councilor Spritzer.
I hate to do this, but Ms. Christiansen, could you just give us a little more of your understanding of how you would make the determination of whether or not this is spot zoning, and why obviously that was a concern initially, but it appears that staff is comfortable moving forward with rezoning the one property at this point?
I mean, essentially, what the courts have determined is that in order for it not to be spot zoning, it has to be for a public purpose and will result in public benefit and not solely the personal benefit of the property owner requesting the rezoning. So I mean, that's a call for, I think, I mean, Plan Commission was comfortable with it, and it's kind of your decision to make as for whether you believe that this does accomplish that. The neighborhood is supportive of this request to do just the commercial building, which shows at least there's some public interest in rezoning it. I mean, we, basically what we do as a planning staff is, we don't necessarily do that analysis, we just try not to bring forward stuff that's just one property, just to avoid the whole thing entirely. So what we do is if we tell them, which is what we told Mr. Brown, to look at adjacent property, properties, and, you know, bring at least two properties so that you have a district, and so that's why the application came forward as it did. But it's really your decision tonight as to whether you feel it meets that standard.
Thank you.
Yes, I think I'll throw myself into this. I don't know, I see a couple of issues coming up here. One is that we have an established use, and I tend to think when we have an established use that the neighborhood's comfortable with, I tend to think that perhaps something was missed during the original comp planning. In that case, I think accepting the fact, accepting an established functioning use that the neighborhood is comfortable with is important to do. I also think that if the neighbors were upset with it, then we would want that additional touch, of having them come before us for conditional uses, but I think so far with the kinds of uses that they've had, it's all been relatively comfortable and workable for the neighborhood. I wouldn't in any way support expanding that on that corridor unless there was some broader necessity, but we've got good uses there, we've had good uses, we've got good support from the community and then those neighbors for this particular parcel, and I'm kind of inclined to think that maybe it's not such a good idea to force the issue and require a lot of staff time to deal with conditional uses going along periodically here, and just accept the reality of what this is. That's my, that's just my observation on it. Do we have any other questions or comments? If not, I think the first thing we want to deal with is the amendment. All in favor of striking 2105 Chopier and leaving this to amend, or amended to 2091? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 6 to 0, and we have a motion to suspend the rules. Any questions on suspending the rules? All in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We've suspended the rules. Vote, you, did you vote with?
Yes, I did, the suspend rule.
Okay. So we suspended the rules by a vote of 6 to 0, and do we have a motion on the underlying issue?
I'll make a motion. I'll move approval of the amended ordinance.
Okay. Move by Vanna Bogart, second by Kincaid. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Item passes 5 to 1. Item 4B.
A proposed ordinance amending the zoning, amending the city zoning map to change the zoning district classification of the properties located at 2091 and 2105 Chopier Road from R1B, single-family residential district, to C2, neighborhood commercial district. The Plan Commission recommended approval 5 to 0 of 2091 Chopier Road only.
Madam Christiansen.
This is, I mean, the same presentation from before, but I, just to remind you that the ordinance is written with both addresses in there, so if you're wanting to just do one property, as you did with the comprehensive plan amendment, you would also need to amend that ordinance as well.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to amend?
I'll make a motion to amend to 2091 only.
Moved by Lubkey.
Second.
Second by Kincaid. All in favor of amending the ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Amendment passes 6 to 0. Do we have a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Moved by Spritzer.
Second.
Second by Lubkey. Any questions on suspending the rules? Hearing none, I'll vote. All in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We suspended the rules by a vote of 6 to 0, and do we have a motion on the underlying ordinance?
Move approval.
Moved by Spritzer.
Second.
Second by Lubkey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Item passes 5 to 1. Item 4C. Go ahead.
A resolution authorizing a conditional use permit to allow an outdoor seating area and outdoor sales possession and consumption of alcohol in a C3, community commercial district, of the property located at 201 Short Street.
I'd like to open the public hearing on item 4C. Okay, oh, yes, excuse me.
If you don't want me to present, I don't want to present. The applicant is proposing a 253-square-foot outdoor seating area on the north side of the building, and the extension of sales possession and consumption of alcohol into that area. They are proposing approximately three tables with four chairs at each table. They had originally requested a five-foot wood privacy fence as part of their application. Plan Commission did feel that five-foot wood privacy fence was too tall, and it would be like, kind of just this wall of wood, so they had changed, they had made a recommendation to require it to be no taller than four feet. The proposed outdoor seating area includes replacing an existing window with a 36-inch door to provide access to the outdoor area. There will also be an outdoor gate for emergency exit. This was sent out to our review agents, and the fire department did have some concerns which are included within the staff recommendation and the Plan Commission recommendation, which is included in the resolution. Plan Commission did vote unanimously to recommend approval of this conditional use permit, but they didn't modify the condition to reduce the height of the fence, and they did add a condition to require some planters. So the resolution before you tonight is a resolution to approve an outdoor seating area and the outdoor sales possession and consumption of alcohol for the property of 201 Short Street, subject to the following conditions, which is the 253-square-foot outdoor seating area on the north side of the building. Prior to the establishment of the conditional uses, the applicant shall amend the liquor license for the premises to include the outdoor area. The outdoor seating area shall be surrounded by a privacy fence that is four feet in height. Before construction begins, the applicant shall obtain an architectural review certificate, fence permit, and building permit. The maximum capacity of the area shall be 12 people. The maximum capacity shall be posted inside the building and within the outdoor seating area, and the door leading to the outdoor seating area shall be marked as an exit. The outdoor seating area shall include an emergency exit gate that leads to the parking lot. The gate shall be at least three feet wide, and a clear exit path shall be maintained. The applicant shall provide a visible and/or audible fire alarm within the outdoor seating area. Music may not be played in the seating area after 10:00 PM. And then the additional condition is that a minimum of two planters with live plant materials shall be required on the corners of the outdoor seating area. They felt that would add some greenery, because there is that parking lot, and then you'd have the fence, so they wanted there to be something there, so that was what they recommended. And then your standard condition about major changes coming back through this public process and minor changes being able to be approved administratively. We did send a notice out to the nearby residents, and we did not hear from any of the residents.
Thank you. Now I'll open the public hearing on item 4C. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on item 4C, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4C. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4C. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on item 4C and entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. President.
Moved by DeForest.
Second.
Second by Lubkey. Do we have any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Item passes 6 to 0. And now item 4D.
A resolution authorizing an amendment to an existing conditional use permit to allow one additional room in an existing boarding house in a C3, community commercial district, for the property located at 622 Broad Street. The Plan Commission recommended approval 5 to 0.
Madam Christiansen.
In 2008, city council authorized a conditional use permit to allow a seven-room boarding house on the subject property. That resolution is included in your packet. One of the conditions of approval said that an additional room would be considered a major amendment, so it had come back through this body. There is a large room in this building which they would like to convert into two rooms. The applicant was in a Plan Commission meeting, but a person who does maintenance and stuff there did indicate that, came to the meeting and indicated that this larger room has caused problems because it's become somewhat of a party room, and so dividing it in half, they were hoping to stop that kind of behavior, so they're bringing forward just to go from seven to eight. We did send this out to the review agents, who did not have any concerns, and Plan Commission did review this and did recommend approval, subject to the conditions listed in the resolution, which is that all of the conditions of approval imposed upon the conditional use permit authorized on January 22nd, 2008, to allow the boarding house remain in full force and effect. in full force and effect. The applicant shall meet with the building official in order to determine whether or not a building permit is required before subdividing that room into two rooms. And then just our standard about major conditions coming back through this process, and that staff may approve minor changes administratively.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing on item four D. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on item four D, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item four D. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item four D. Hearing none, I'll call the, or I'll close the public hearing on item four D and entertain a motion.
Motion for approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Lubke, second by DeForest. Do we have any questions or comments? Okay. Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I do have one question. Ms. Christiansen, is there ample parking for this additional space, additional room that'll be rented?
There is one space per room, so there's parking for everything.
There will be eight spaces now? All right. Thank you.
Another question.
Yes, Counselor Kincaid.
Is the subdivision of that large room consistent with building codes in terms of size of bedrooms and the number of toilets, facilities for eight, that kind of stuff?
It will be.
Has that been determined?
I don't think that the building inspector has met with him yet, but if it doesn't meet the requirements, then it won't be allowed to move forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes six zero. Closes our public hearings. We're moving on to item five, which is citizens' participation. We have reached the point in the agenda for citizens to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us or may become for us in the future. Council members may not act on any requests at this meeting, but may refer a speaker to staff or assistants. We ask that you hold all your comments to less than three minutes and refrain from personal attacks of any kind. Do we have any individuals wishing to come forward and speak under citizens' participation? Second call for persons to come forward and speak under citizens' participation. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak under citizens' participation. Hearing none, I'll close citizens' participation and move on to the consent agenda, item six. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless the council members have requests, in which event they will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda. Does a council member wish any items removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, the consent agenda will consist of items six A through six F. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Moved by Lubke, second by Vanda Bogart. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes six zero. Item seven, ordinances.
A proposed substitute amendment ordinance number one to create section 15.03 sub 4G of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit pertaining to loitering on public property. The ABLCC recommended approval four to zero.
Madam Attorney.
Good evening. As you see through the staff report, the staff has made the one change that was approved by council at the last meeting. In addition, they've added some clarification regarding constitutional protections in subsection C. I don't have anything further to add other than what was brought up at the last meeting.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure we'll have questions of you. It sounds like we're going to have a discussion. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Lubke, second by Vanda Bogart. And so I'm sure we'll need to go ahead and get started with council comments and questions. Counselor DeForest.
You're gonna let me go first?
Of course.
Oh, leave me hanging out there. I love it. Yes, I would like to propose a change for my colleagues to consider. I am concerned with the broad language about, that basically includes any and all public spaces as enforceable under this ordinance. I would like to propose that under section B, sorry, I'm looking for the, section B, I would like to request an amendment that we strike or other place of assembly or public use. And the reason why I am requesting that amendment is because I am comfortable with the enforcement in our parking lots, in our sidewalks, in our streets, but I just feel like other places of assembly or public use is way too broad for the intent of this ordinance. I'm concerned that could apply to a park, which means that someone could be at a park and say, hey, I don't like the music that that crowd's playing over there under that park shelter pavilion, and so that's disturbing to me, and I want that group moved. I just, I think it's way too broad. I certainly want to support the police officer's tool in being able to use this in some problem areas that we've had, but I don't think we need as broad as other place of assembly or public use. Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Do we have any questions or comments on that amendment? Counselor Lubke.
Yeah, I'd like to keep it the way it is because I think we have to give our police the discretion and have to, if we start limiting, you're gonna, the individuals who would abuse this are gonna find the places to abuse it, and I want to give our police, who are well-trained, the discretion to deal with it wherever the problem exists. So I'm gonna vote against that.
Okay. I have a question myself on, she's mentioning park spaces. It's my understanding that the parks generally, under ordinance, close at, have a closing time. Is that correct?
It's my understanding most parks do have a closing time, depending upon where it's located in the city.
And if we establish a closing time, then that established by ordinance would give the police the ability at that time to take action of someone in a closed park, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so if we, if we did strike that language, you know, that would, we would still have the ability to enforce in a park based on the park closing times?
Correct.
Okay, so, all right, that satisfies me as far as that's concerned. Counselor Vanda Bogart.
I agree with Counselor Lubke that the discretion is needed to address the problem wherever it might exist and at whatever time it might exist. A park wouldn't close presumably until dusk or approximately that time or even after that, but it certainly is within bounds of anticipation that a rowdy group could take over or take root in Big Hills Park for a football celebration or something that gets out of hand or, or some other location, Leesons Park after softball games, or, you know, a wide variety of scenarios could exist outside of a time limit and in a park. So I think that the broader discretion is necessary, and as I think I indicated in our discussions the last time we brought this up. I am fearful and concerned about police overreach, but I think the way to address it isn't to try and at the front end hamstring them with lots of restrictions, it's to give them the broad authority, and if it is abused rather at some point, then rein it back in. But rather than tying their hands in advance, I'm in favor of leaving it as it is. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Van, or Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I guess I would just like to say that I don't agree with colleague Vanda Bogart's logic. With all due respect, I believe it's our responsibility to create well-crafted, well-written, thoughtful ordinances, thoughtful law. And I don't like the logic that if police power is abused, then we'll come back and address it. I think we should create laws where there is little room for police abuse. I think we have fantastic police officers, but we also need to balance that with writing good law. And so I don't agree with or subscribe to that logic, that we leave it real broad, and then if we have a problem, we go back and fix it. There shouldn't be a problem. There should not be an abuse of this. I want to give them the tool, but again, it's too broad to say that at a public park at noon, that people could be moved along based slowly on a very subjective decision that they're creating a disturbance. That's concerning to me. Thank you.
So I have a question, but if they are creating disturbance, we'd want to move them on in a park at noon, right?
Well, that's a, creating a disturbance is a very subjective, we don't have much here, thank goodness. I was successful in striking annoyance. To me, creating a disturbance is very subjective. And what's a disturbance to one person at a public park, you know, might not be to another. I just, I understand the concerns in parking lots. Parking lots are supposed to be for parking cars, and we don't want that to spill over into sidewalks. But to leave this so wide open that we're gonna allow this loitering ordinance to take effect in a public park in the middle of the day is very concerning to me. Thank you.
Counselor Spritzer.
I am in favor of this amendment, but I just wanted to point out that, for those who are concerned that this wouldn't be broad enough if this passes, paragraph A would still apply even with this amendment, as I understand it, which references specific sorts of loitering, such as disturbing the peace or disturbing the comfort of someone interfering with pedestrians or vehicles. It would simply be section B that just references loitering without references to the more specific definitions that would be somewhat more limited by this amendment. So I think if someone's actually creating a problem in a park, say at noon, we would still be able to deal with it under the first section of this ordinance, but the broader part that is intended to basically move people along before they have caused a specific problem would not apply to the places of assembly or public use with this amendment.
Ms. Krueger, did you agree with the statement that...
Counselor Spritzer is accurate. If there are still problems, they can be dealt with under sub one, or sub A, excuse me.
All right. That makes me comfortable. Do we have any other questions or comments on the Counselor DeForest amendment? Hearing none, all in favor of Counselor DeForest's amendment to the ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
This amendment passes by a vote of four to two. Do we have any other counselor questions or comments? Counselor Spritzer.
I, this amendment that just passed definitely helps to address some of the concerns that I had with the ordinance. I had had a fairly lengthy email exchange with Ms. Krueger and a phone exchange today with Mr. Casper about some of my concerns and written up a couple other possible amendments. And I don't know whether this has support to pass or not, but after discussion upstairs, I wanted to just offer one amendment and see where it goes that would further address some of the concerns. I'm fairly comfortable with section A, which was just referenced, that has the specific manners of loitering that could cause an issue. I wanted to offer an amendment to section B, which is the more general section, that would add the phrase after the beginning that says, "No person shall loiter," and would add the phrase, "In a manner prohibited by section 1503 4GA," which would be the preceding paragraph, or "In a manner prohibited by any other City of Beloit ordinance." That would, and I believe the clerk has a copy of what I just read. The idea of that would be to basically tie B to the definitions in A or any other specific violation, as opposed to just having mere loitering be enough to allow someone to be moved on. So I will make that amendment and see if anyone has any interest in it.
If there is, Counselor Spritzer may make just a slight amendment to your language.
Certainly.
From a legal perspective, if you put, "No person shall loiter," in a manner prohibited by parant A and parant in a manner, I think there's, if you have prohibited it by any other city ordinance, I'm not sure what goal that would reach.
Okay.
And those behaviors would be covered by any other ordinances. So you could just simply put, "In a manner prohibited by subsection A," after "in."
Okay.
And that would satisfy, I think, what you're looking for.
Then I will move that and see if it gets a second.
I'll second that amendment.
Moved by Spritzer and second by DeForest. Counselor DeForest, did you have something to add?
Thank you. Yes, I just would like to say, I do think that's a critical amendment because then it does help connect it more strongly to how we're defining loitering in A. My concern is that loitering is a very subjective, can be a very subjective decision-making point for an individual, and I want to make sure that we're telling people that they can't loiter as we're defining it in A versus just that they can't loiter in general, which means they can't just hang around. And I, I don't know. I'm having trouble articulating my concern, and I apologize for that. Again, I think it makes sense to connect it to, A, that's the intent of this ordinance. I support that intent, but we have to, in my opinion, be very careful about infringing on individual rights. And to me, if we leave it broadly as it is, and B, that is concerning for me. Thank you.
I understand where you're coming from, Counselor DeForest. I think no one wants to see an ordinance like this applied to some poor person, a person who's sitting on a park bench, minding their own business, reading a book or listening to their iPod, you know, their iPod. I don't think that was the intent, and I don't think that would actually occur, but I do understand how you're feeling because there's a certain amount of cynicism in our society about that. Counselor Vanda Bogart.
My question, I guess, is what does that verbiage, "In a manner prohibited by," add to it? It's already there, and isn't it a redundant piece of language? What does it add or what does it do differently than what is already there? I'm not understanding that. It makes us maybe feel a little better because it references the earlier subsection, but what does it do?
I think you've struck the point. It makes us feel better.
Well, I'm all for feeling better.
Counselor DeForest.
For me, this is more than about just feeling better. I want to protect individuals' rights and freedoms. This is not just a feel-good thing. This is very hard to balance. Again, I want to emphasize, I have confidence in our police officers to use good judgment. However, B, which as it stands, says that no person shall loiter, no person should hang out, and a person should, and just leaving it like that without connecting it to the mannerisms in A that we describe as concerning are an issue for me because, in a sense, then we are saying by our law that no person can just hang out on a park bench, really. That's what's concerning about the way this is written.
I'm just very concerned with these amendments, that we're taking away the discretion, the judgment, and better yet, the ability of our police officers to interpret a situation that they've been so well-trained for. Every situation is unique, and by putting these amendments in like this, we're doing that. Let the officers do their job. I'll just leave it at that.
Counselor Lubke, I don't know. It seems like to me that essentially the way it would functionally work is that the officers would probably refer to the definition in A regardless.
I can see them going through there.
Sure. So I think that, I'm not certain that this one's devastating to the intent, and if it, you know, helps define things, we're just using the language from the first section. So I don't know that I have a huge problem with it myself. Do we have any other comments or questions? All in favor of this amendment by Counselor Spritzer, say aye.
Aye.
Are we adopting Ms. Krueger's amendment to the rest of the verbiage? Or are we just...
Sorry. Yes. Actually, that is, I believe that's what I understood, is that Counselor Spritzer amended his statement to reflect that alteration.
To be clear, it says, "No person shall loiter in a manner prohibited by subsection A," or, or, excuse me, "on or about any public street, public sidewalk, street crossing, alley, bridge, excuse me, public parking lot after being requested to move by any police officer." That's what that first sentence will read.
That was what I intended to move.
Okay. All right. Counselor DeForest, you had some...
One more quick statement.
Yes.
If the sentiment... If the sentiments I'm hearing from my colleagues is, hey, it's pretty obvious we're referring to A anyway, why not just include it to be safe? What is the harm in referring it and connecting B to A? That's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? And I'll go ahead and call the matter. All in favor of Counselor Spritzer's amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Amendment passes four to two. Do we have any further amendments that are desired? Counselor Spritzer.
I just wanted to thank my colleagues for entertaining these amendments, and I'm prepared to vote for the ordinance and hope that it's effective in solving the issues we've been having.
Right. Thank you. Do we have a motion on the ordinance as amended?
I'll move.
Moved by DeForest.
Second.
Seconded by Kincaid. Any other questions or comments on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item passes six zero. I believe that the city manager had requested that we move forward item 11 to this point on the-
Somewhere before we get into management.
Sure. Let's go ahead and handle that request at this time. I'd like to go ahead and call forward item 11A.
A resolution authorizing a three-year extension for payment of outstanding special assessments against Walnut Grove Plat 1 and Plat 2.
Do the staff report on those or?
Okay. However you want to handle it, whichever.
You want to handle it? Go ahead. Sure. Thank you. This if council passes would be the third or, excuse me, the council previously in '09 passed what was titled then a third amended final resolution for Walnut Grove granting a three-year deferral, which is coming up this January, January 31 of 2014. Given current market conditions, it appears a distinct possibility that if we stood firm on this, these properties might well end up on the tax foreclosure rolls. It's not property that the county would likely be interested in holding on to, nor would the city be interested in acquiring it from the county should there be a tax foreclosure. We think under the current market conditions, it would be reasonable to grant a further three-year deferral. The resolution contains a specific new due date of January 31, 2017. And I'll be glad to respond to any other questions counselors may have.
Start, shall we go ahead and get a motion to approve? Get it on the table.
Mr. Second. I'll second it.
Okay. Moved by Vanda Bogart, seconded by Lukey. Counselor Spritzer.
I think this makes sense. I just had one question as it relates to this and the next item. The interest rates, it appears started out the same but are now going to be different. I think one is at 4% and one is at 6%. I was just wondering what the rationale on that was.
Both of the matters, both subdivisions, that is, tracked somewhat differently over the past years and had differing interest rates. I don't I don't know that I maybe the manager wants to comment further. Yeah, I think I should answer that question. These special assessments were issued at different times. All of the special assessment resolutions that we have in effect generally have different interest rates because they're based on whatever the underlying interest rate was for the money the city borrowed to pay for the improvements in question. So all of them are different. There was an initial ordinance amendment to sync them up at the higher rate. Obviously, the owners of the property objected to that because they had entered into a special assessment with a known interest rate. And the purpose for this resolution was intended to be simply to do the three-year extension, which is provided for in council's special assessment ordinance, not to change any of the substantive nature of the assessments. So the resolutions were corrected to provide for a three-year extension under the current terms and conditions.
Counselor Vanda Bogart.
I'm happy to support the resolution as I made the motion and also than the next one that we'll deal with. But I do want to emphasize and point out that this this extension or these extensions that we've done, plural, should not in any way be taken by the investment community or the real estate community as presidential in nature. The city is not liking doing this. This is the worst of the best of other bad alternatives. And I'm happy to do it, but it's not going to happen again if I can help it.
I might add, Mr. President, also that this program worked great for a number of years. We got a lot of residential construction done, a lot of new subdivisions created on both the east and west sides of the city. But as I commented earlier, the city would not even entertain another proposal to plat and put improvements in for yet another subdivision until the lots that are already platted are substantially built out. And there are a lot of them out there in actually four different subdivisions, three of which were done under deferred assessment. One was paid for by the developer. So there are a lot of residential lots platted with improvements in place that would have to be built out before the city would entertain doing another deferred assessment program.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item 11A passes six zero. Item 11B.
A resolution authorizing a three-year extension for payment of outstanding special assessments against Deerfield Estates.
This is similar to the matter the council just visited. It tracked differently. There was a third amended final resolution in 2007, then in 2011, the council granted a further resolution with a further deferral. That again had a specific due date, the same as Walnut Grove's, of January 31, 2014. If this is passed by council, it would again adopt in the resolution a specific new due date of January 31, 2017, three years later. Again, I'll be glad to answer questions from counselors.
Do we have a motion on the matter?
Motion approved.
Moved by Lukey.
Seconded.
Seconded by Kincaid. Do we have any additional questions or comments by counselors? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item passes six zero. Item 11C.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, Turtle Township, Rock County, and the City of Beloit pertaining to the proposed improvement of Hart Road and the use of Hart Road and County Highway X and County Highway S for incident management and congestion management for the Interstate Highway 3990.
Mr. Royson.
This Hart Road improvement project that the memorandum of agreement relates to is a component of the overall I-3990 improvement of the freeway corridor that primarily at the core has the six-laning of the freeway between the Wisconsin-Olewood border on the south, north to Madison. But this is part of the project that provides for alternate route alignments that would be utilized during incident management and also construction management to bypass interchanges or segments of the freeway that might be, for one reason or another, not available for use. The Hart Road corridor as proposed to be improved would remain a rural road with paved shoulders that could be used as bike lanes. The intersection of Hart Road and Chopia Road, which is highway, County Highway H, would be realigned to improve the intersection's safety. The Wisconsin Department of Transportation would implement the project, and no local funding is required in order to achieve this beneficial local arterial street improvement at no cost to the city. Certainly, then, staff recommends approval of the authorizing resolution.
Thank you.
Move approval, Mr. President.
Moved by Vanda Bogart, seconded by DeForest. Do we have any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item passes six zero. Item eight, we will resume the normal order of business, and would be appointments, and there are none. So number nine is council activities and upcoming events. And we'll start with Counselor DeForest.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to inform the public that Welty Environmental Center is having their Fall Family Harvest Festival on Sunday, October 13, from 11 to 3:00. Lots of fun activities out at Beckman Mill County Park. Was able to walk out there recently and take a tour of the Beckman Mill and really enjoyed myself. It's a beautiful place, lots of great history, and would encourage you to take the trip out there. And then on a personal note, I wanted to thank everyone for their support of my family during this very trying time with my son fighting leukemia. He is officially home for good. I'm thrilled. We have a definitive biopsy tomorrow, and hopefully we will get good news that his cancer is in remission. So I wanted to thank everyone for their kindnessness shown and to my colleagues for their understanding as I have been doing a little less rigorous research and activity as a city council this these past five months, but thank you.
Counselor Vanda Bogart.
Lots of different activities, but the one I wanted to mention most is that October is National Mental Health Association or Mental Health Awareness Month. And we all know the statistics. Individuals have these sorts of issues, and obviously, it's in the news with shootings in Washington and Navy Yards and elsewhere. Serious stuff. There is help available through the National Association of NAMI. I forget the acronym. But there's a NAMI meeting tomorrow night at the Job Center in Janesville at, I think, 7:00. So there's help out there, but this is the month for awareness of that particular issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kincaid.
I have no activities to report locally. I was out of town for a while.
Counselor Lukey.
I think the big thing is this Saturday night at SUDS, Beloit's very own, Tony Scodwell, who graduated from Beloit High School in 1961, is coming back to put on a show, and the public is invited. There's a charge to get in, but it's a real treat to see somebody who has entertained with Frank Sinatra and Tony Bennett and on The Tonight Show and other places and brought lots of acclaim to Beloit. He's come back often to Beloit. Just recently, he was here a couple months ago, and it was named Tony Scodwell Week, and he taught with his wife at Beloit College and did a magnificent job teaching music, and his wife taught some photography classes. So he's coming back this weekend, and hopefully, Beloiters can get out and be entertained by one of our very own.
Thank you. Counselor Spritzer.
This past Saturday morning, I volunteered at the Nelson Avenue Sharing Gardens Work Day, helping to get the garden ready to be put to bed for the season. Not this Saturday, but the one after that, there's going to be another workday from 9:00 to noon. So stop over if you're able to, both in Nelson and Porter Avenue Sharing Gardens. And the weekend after that, the 26th, will be the annual Pumpkin Festival organized by Community Action, so keep your eye out for more details on that one.
Thank you. Well, I usually don't have anything, but this time before we meet again, next week, the Wisconsin League of Municipalities will be having its annual conference, and our city manager will be invested as president of that organization. That's a culmination for him, a feather in the cap for the city. I and Counselor Vanda Bogart will be going up to attend the conference to support the city manager and to make sure that Beloit's well-represented, although we can hardly add to that representation from your presence, Mr. City Manager, and soon to be president of the League. That's all I had to add to this. Item 10, city manager's presentation. Item 10A.
A presentation of the proposed 2014 operating library and capital improvements budgets.
Thank you, and thank you very much, Mr. President. I appreciate those kind words. It's an exciting opportunity, and I'm looking forward to my year of service to the state municipal league. It's indeed a pleasure this evening to be able to present to council and the community the 2014 proposed operating and capital budgets for the both fiscal and calendar year 2014. A little bit different budget process. This was the first time in the last three state biennial budgets that there had not been significant revenue reductions on the part of the state. So we had a bit of a unique opportunity here to at least start the budget preparation process at zero. And as indicated, the last two cycles, we were not able to do that, necessitated substantial and pretty deep cuts in our operation to get those budgets balanced. That was not necessary this year. The budget Mr. York is going to present to you in a moment is balanced. Revenues and expenditures match with minimal use of fund balance within the city's policy. There is a very small property tax increase proposed in the budget that will have minimal impact on our property owners. There are no major fees, water, sewer, solid waste collection fees. There are no new taxes or fees proposed in the document. It's very much a status quo budget. At the same time, all of the city's services and facilities are fully funded for next year. The staffing levels will remain the same in the community for next year, so all of the departments, programs, and services and staffing levels are funded within the document. I think I'll conclude my introduction at that point and turn it over to Mr. York, who will walk council and the community through the PowerPoint this evening and will highlight the major numbers in this year's budget. Paul?
Mr. York.
Thank you, Larry. As Larry indicated, the budget has been presented to the council formally. It is on the city's webpage. It's been out there for not quite a week yet. Hopefully, you all have had an opportunity to go through the budget by this time. But we are going to go through some of the highlights of the budget. The total budget is increasing actually under 1% for this next year, 2014. The total was 91.4 million. That's an increase of just a little bit over $367,000 over the 2013 budget. Again, less than one-half of 1% increase. The general fund portion of the budget is proposed at 30.9 million. Again, this is a very slight increase over the 2013 budget, $330,000, a little bit over 1% increase over the current year. Our other major operating funds are comprised of our enterprise fund operations. These are primarily the utility funds that we have, water, sewer, and stormwater. Also includes our transit operation golf course and our ambulance fund. And as you can see, again, a very slight increase over the current year, about one-half of a percent, $102,000. This next slide, I think, gives you a really good portrayal of the budget picture. It shows all the major operating funds for the city as well as some of our internal service funds, which are primarily made up of our insurance programs, both our health insurance fund and our liability insurance. And this also includes our equipment maintenance operation. And then finally, the capital improvements budget for next year at a little bit over $8.7 million. And again, overall, the total increase in the budget for all funds proposed for 2014 is $367,000 roughly. So as you can see, it's a fairly flat budget across all of our funds, the only exception being the debt service fund. And of course, those are the long-term debt obligations the city has. And the increase there is basically as a result of new debt that the city's issued in the past year, as well as how the amortization works out as far as the debt repayment schedules on the outstanding bonds. The general fund portion of the budget, the revenue side, this chart here gives you an indication of primarily where the money comes from to help fund our general fund operations. As we've noted in the past, the majority of our general fund revenues come from state funding sources- funding sources that the city receives, primarily the shared revenue and expenditure restraint payments that we receive. The $19 million also includes highway maintenance funds the city receives each year for the cost of maintaining the streets in the city. And the largest local revenue source we have are the property taxes and other taxes that the city imposes, you know, primarily the motel taxes is included in that. And that's just a little bit over $7.9 million proposed for next year. This chart here gives you a graphic portrayal of our revenue sources. This little pie chart, I think, is pretty telling, and again, the fact that most of our revenue are coming from the state and federal aids that we receive in the general fund. On the expenditure side, this chart gives you a breakdown on the general fund, where the money's going that we bring in. You know, as you can see, the two large spending units are the police and fire department, the public safety budgets. They make up about two-thirds of our general fund operations. The next largest department's Public Works, and then, of course, Finance and Administration, which includes a whole host of operating divisions within the general fund. And this pie chart sort of gives you a breakout of, graphically, of how these funds are distributed. And then, again, police and fire make up about two-thirds of the total operating budget for the general fund. The next category of funds are special revenue funds. These are primarily our tax increment districts, and our libraries also included in here, as well as the solid waste and recycling program that the city operates. The taxes, again, are predominantly the increment that's generated from the tax increment districts and the money that comes in to help fund the library operation. Our solid waste program is funded entirely from these charges that we make each month on the monthly utility bills, and that's what makes up the $2.6 million that you see there as far as the departmental earnings. Those are primarily the fees that we charge for the solid waste collection. And this gives you a breakdown of all the different funds that make up our special revenue funds. And again, as you will notice on here, the majority of these are the tax increment districts that we have. This also includes a lot of our grant programs that we receive, federal and state funding for, for some of the public safety grants, community development block grants included in here, along with some of their different programs that they have. Again, the total for the special revenue funds is $14.5 million. It's actually a slight decrease from the 2013 budget. And our enterprise funds that I mentioned a few minutes ago, these are primarily funded from user charges for the services that are generated by the enterprise operations. There are some tax, property tax levy revenues that are used to fund some of these operations, primarily the transit system or cemeteries. And as you'll notice, when we get on down to the tax levy, that for the first time, we also have some money in here for the golf course operations for next year, $50,000. But again, primarily, these operations are funded from user charges. This gives you a breakout of the different funds for next year. And as you can see, overall, there's a very slight increase in the overall budget for all the enterprise operations for next year. Our capital improvements budget for 2014, again, it's a slight decrease over the current year, about $200,000. Most of that's within the capital improvements budget itself. We did scale back our capital projects for next year, basically due to the limitation that we have as far as borrowing. The change that we had in our equalized assessed values for next year is going to limit the amount of debt that we can take on for 2014 and still remain reasonably close to our policy limit of 3.5% of our equalized value. We're slightly above that, but we feel that that's warranted based on the projects that are being proposed, as well as, we believe, new construction this year, as well as, we hope to be successful in our appeal before the Tax Commission on the appeal of the 2013 values, that our 2014 assessments will be restored next year to where their proper value should be. The internal service funds mentioned are primarily our insurance programs that we have. Most of this is attributed to the health plan that the city operates. We are self-insured on our health insurance. We are not planning any changes in benefits for next year on our health plan. We're maintaining the same health benefit package, and there is no premium increase included in the budget for next year proposed. We've had two fairly good years, back-to-back, as far as claims, and we feel that a premium increase for 2014 isn't warranted at this point, based on our recent claims history that we've had. The next category is our debt service budget. It sort of is what it is. These are the scheduled debt payments that are due on the outstanding bonds that the city has issued. There's not a whole lot of flexibility or leeway as far as, you know, what we can do with our debt service. These are obligations that the city has and has to meet. This gives you an indication of how that's paid for. It's primarily from the property tax. The $4.7 million is directly on the tax levy. And the other financing source, the $1.6 million that you see here, is actually money coming in to the debt service fund from our tax increment districts to cover the portion of GO debt that's attributed to some of the borrowings that have taken place over the years that have funded projects in our tax increment districts, is what the $1.6 million is. We also have some money coming in from the fundraising activities. I think you remember a few years ago for the library, you know, one of the activities that we had was to generate contributions from the public to help pay for some of the improvements out there. So, there is a little bit of money that comes in to help defray some of the outstanding debt on the furniture and fixtures that were installed at the library a few years ago that we still have outstanding debt on to help pay for those improvements. This slide gives you a breakdown of the property tax levy that's proposed for next year. There is a slight increase being proposed in the levy, just under $495,000, about 3.62%. The majority of that increase is attributed directly to the debt service that we're required to meet for next year. There is a slight increase in the general fund portion of the levy, about $86,000. And again, as I mentioned previously, there is a $50,000 allocation to the golf course for next year to help meet some of their operating costs. We have a number of different grant programs that are included in the tax levy, and these are the city's portion of the grant program that we're required to meet. Generally, there's some type of sharing offset, and those are all included in the tax levy. And it also includes the public library, which shows no increase in levy for the library for next year, as well as the transit operation. We're proposing the same levy amount for transit for next year. This chart gives you an indication of our tax rate. I'd like to point out the 10.774 rate that's proposed for 2013 property taxes that's collected in 2014. That is a preliminary rate. That's based on our projected assessment numbers for this year. We won't receive final assessed values from the Department of Revenue until probably mid-November. So, that rate is going to change between now and when the tax bills are actually calculated the first part of December. But that's our best projection at this point, and it does certainly indicate that most likely there is going to be an increase in the tax rate for next year, and that's basically as a result of the slight levy increase, as well as the decrease in assessed values that we're anticipating for this year, which helps to drive that rate up. And as you can see from this chart, what I'm talking about, there's been a fairly steady decline the last couple of years in the city's tax base, and that has a direct impact on the increase that you saw on the previous graph as far as our tax rate is concerned. That's what's driving that essentially. Next steps, we have a workshop scheduled. I think you'll take some action on that next on the agenda here, but we are proposing a workshop next Monday at the library. Starts at 8:00 in the morning, and we're there for the duration of the day. Following the workshop, we have a public hearing scheduled for two weeks from tonight at the next regularly-scheduled council meeting. If necessary, the council can certainly schedule additional workshops if you feel the need to do so before taking any formal action on the budget. And at this point, unless there's other plans, you know, we will place this on the agenda for council consideration, the first meeting in November, as we have pretty much every year the last several years. That's generally when the council has scheduled to take some formal action on the budget. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Councilor DeForest.
Thank you. I do have two quick questions for the public's interest. On page six, the general fund budget expenditures, could you just, in general, share with us what accounts for the significant increase in expenditures in the Finance and Administration Department, and what's accounting for the decreased change in expenditures for police and fire?
The increase in Finance Administration is basically, there's about three or four reasons. Number one, the largest portion of this $410,000 increase here are funds that we have set aside for implementation of the pay and classification study for next year.
Okay.
You know, we do hope to try to implement as much of the new pay plan as we possibly can. One of the things that the pay plan included were, I think it referred to it as market adjustments to positions. Those positions that were at or below the midpoint were eligible for up to a 2% increase to bring those individuals closer toward the midpoint. So, there are some funds in the budget to do that for those that would be eligible for that increase. We've also put some money in there for merit increases for next year, based on the evaluations. We've also retained the longevity program for employees. You know, after five years of service, employees are eligible to receive a longevity increase, so there are funds in there for those individuals that are eligible for next year. And we've also set aside about 1% as a cost of living adjustment for employees for next We also have some money in here next year in the clerk's office for a couple additional elections that'll be scheduled for next year. I think we have four next year, so we had to budget some additional funds in the clerk's office to cover the cost of those. We have contracts with our police, fire, and transit workers that expire at the end of this year, so we did put some additional funds in our HR department to cover any legal expenses that may arise as a result of negotiating new contracts with those different employees. I believe that was the bulk of that increase.
IT, you have some money there for the IT consultant.
Yeah, there was. As you know, we've entered into a consulting contract last year with a firm that assists us with our IT networking responsibilities. And we have also set, you know, put some additional funds in our IT budget to cover the costs of continuing to contract with a third-party vendor for those services. The police and fire, the basic reason those decreases, the pension contributions for next year actually decreased. So, we're getting a little bit of a break from WRS on the pension rates, and that's really what caused those decreases there.
All right, thank you.
Do we have any other questions or comments? Right then, I think that, wanted to go ahead and take action on setting the...
I think, yes, Mr. President, if there are no further questions on the initial budget presentation tonight, we would recommend that council again set aside next Monday, October 14th, for a full-day workshop on the budget. We'd like to start at 8:00, and we'll run till we're finished, approximately 5:00 o'clock. We'd recommend we do this again in the community room at the new Beloit Public Library. This will be an opportunity for you to hear from certainly all of the department directors, most of the major division heads as well. We'll be presenting an opportunity to ask questions about their various budget submittals, and certainly we'll go through the whole capital spending plan for the 2014 budget. And we've traditionally done that by motion of council.
All right. No have a...
Motion to wait next Monday at 8:00.
Moved by Lukey.
Second.
Second by Spritzer. All in favor of setting our workshop for next Monday as specified, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? That has been established. That would be, now, the last thing on the agenda then would be a German, item 12.
I'll move a German.
By DeForest, second by Spritzer. All in favor of a German, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.